Sorry, there's no sound on my end.
Martha? I think in the past, we've had people who wanted to speak, like, and John in particular. We had them send us a nomination. I'm kind of concerned that if we have... Basically, I know what John wants to talk about. It's sort of an agenda item that we don't have on our agenda. And I think if we get into the habit of allowing people to just propose agenda items, we're never going to get through anything else. But I think it's important, we actually, when I was chair at some point, I can't remember, we incorporated some of John's suggestions. And so I think it would be valuable if he could submit something in writing and then we could consider it.
Okay, and I think he has the right as a citizen to make a least three minute public comment during the public comment section, which I think...
Okay, are there any other amendments to the agenda? Oh, I was thinking that perhaps down in the organizational business that we should define our March 12th meeting. I try to get a framework of an agenda for that. Is that agreeable to everybody? As another agenda item? Well, just within the organization business to discuss the March 12th agenda. Yeah, I assume you do that. Okay. Any other suggestions? If not, take a motion.
I move to approve the agenda as slightly amended.
Okay.
Mary, you taking minutes?
Oh, that was the other thing.
Oh.
Yeah, we need to get that straight, so. I can probably do it.
Okay.
I'll do it tonight, but when we also, when we get down to other organizational, we should straighten that out too. Or, you know, discuss that.
Good.
Okay. Okay, let's have a vote. How do you vote, Priscilla?
Yes.
And that?
Yes.
That's a man, okay, and that? Chemo?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
And I'm the guest as well.
So, if I may.
Yes.
So, because of our kind of last minute video stuff here, so I have the camera running here facing majority of the board. And we have the audio up, but I think if we all speak up, especially on that side of the room, I think it'll be heard, but it's not optimal.
Shall we test it with someone?
Well, I think this is about as good as we're gonna do. I just, I think the audio is on, people can hear us, but I believe we're gonna have to just speak up if you're coming inside of the room.
Okay, I'm noticing a handoff, you know, thinking this is her technical difficulty.
It probably is, yeah.
There we can hear probably this well.
So Pam, if you had your hand up, Pam Smith, but you're muted.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that we did not hear the vote for chair. There was no audio.
Okay.
We're getting audio now, but there was no audio for the first, I don't know, ten minutes of the meeting.
Okay, well, we could reiterate what the vote is. So... To do that, just to cover the gap.
People, people, yeah.
Okay, so Priscilla Vincent nominated me to be chair, second by Marsha, and the vote was unanimous. And so next, nominated Chemo Briggs as vice chair, which was seconded by Matt, and that was also unanimous. And then we spoke a bit about the agenda under organizational business to consider the March 12th agenda. And we also, we've had a tradition of two, you know, one or two select board members taking minutes. So I'm taking the minutes for tonight, but when we get down to organizational, we need to really actually sort of assign that partly to people so they can alternate. Because we've tried to get a person to take minutes electronically, and it hasn't worked. So do you have something to add, Brennan?
I do, I have some good news. We had, unexpectedly, we have someone who is interested in being the minute taker. And we're gonna meet with him on Monday. A woman who's moving back to the area that is looking for something to get involved with. And so assuming that goes well, we might have a minute taker for the 12th, if she's able to react that quickly. But again, I just say this because it seems like we might have a permanent paid minute taker.
Okay, and it's probably good to have backup anyway.
It probably would be good, just in case somebody can't make the meeting.
Started after you've done it a few times, you get used to inform them, and you know what's required and what's not required, so, okay.
Do we make a motion to dance a jig now? That's, that would be good news.
Let's see. So I think that's, that's all that we've discussed for the people who are on today.
Right, and we discussed about John's limited time.
Oh, yes, yes. I asked if John Carroll could have more than our usual three minutes to speak during public comments. He's got some suggestions to make to us. And it was felt that it'd probably be more helpful to provide them in the meeting before we decided to make an agenda item. But he's perfectly welcome to speak during, you know, the three minutes that we travel a lot for, you know, public comments for anybody who shows up. So, if I need anything else, I think that's all, right? Okay, so we'll go on to public comments for items not on the agenda. Are there any public comments? Oh, John, would you want to speak during this time, or?
Um, what is the time allocated?
It's only three minutes.
No, I would prefer...
To do more comprehensive.
Longer, that so that there might be some dialogue as well.
Yes.
At another meeting, if you wish.
Okay. If you care to, you could, you know, send ideas in writing too.
Pardon me?
As correspondence, if you're willing to.
Yeah, I think it's best that I have notes for you, but I think it's best that I walk through them with you because they're not exactly self-explanatory, they're pretty cryptic.
Okay, all right, well, thank you. Okay. Yes.
Can we put that on the agenda for next week?
To hear?
To hear from John.
We could do that. And if he wants to stick around a little bit, we would probably do that during our number 11.
Mary?
Yes.
And how will we treat other people in town? Are we gonna put everybody on an agenda item? We don't even, I mean, I'm not entirely sure what you want to talk about, but I don't know that it's appropriate necessarily. I mean, maybe you want to spend one minute and tell us what it's about.
You wish?
I think, yeah, if you could do a little elevator speech, that would be great, because also, you know, the rest of the town will see it.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board, thank you again for your willingness to serve for yet another year, this is some of you. What I've been, what I've put together is sort of just a almost random set of thoughts on the general topic of roles and responsibilities, or, I'm sorry, roles and process of the board. And I suspect that most of the points I might have enumerated here are much consensus. And others may be make sense to some, but not to others. And what I'm suggesting here is that some unanimity of understanding might be a good thing to achieve, so that you're all playing on the same page, and you all have, you all know what to expect of one another in terms of comportment and process. So what I've done is I've set forth from the beginning, so the authorities' duties and responsibilities of the board, none of it should be a surprise to you. It's worth documenting it, I think, for the public, if you will. And then, a point that I've not heard discussed much is sort of, what's the model for the select board? What, what other organization is essentially similar in scope, purpose, process? And what I want to offer to you is to be thinking about the board of directors of a not-for-profit organization, think of Dr. College, think of the hospital, think of the Red Cross. They all have a chosen board of directors who bring together a variety of backgrounds and skills. And they're responsible for the shaping of policy, and they don't drop a finger. That is to say, they have no authority to directly implement, but they do have authority over the person that they nominate or retain to be their manager or executive director or chief operating officer, or whatever that person is. And they work through that person, in that case, the town manager. I also wanted to observe only, is that, is that we think of this as a legislative body, and it is in statute referred to as a legislative body. Having been in our legislative body in Montpelier, I, I, I can relate to that. God, you, you make laws, rules, policy, and you do budgets. That's just exactly what the General Assembly does. But you also are the governor. Interestingly enough, you also have executive responsibility in the, in the sense of that a governor has executive responsibility. That doesn't mean the governor goes out and chops wood or visits needy families. He has an organization who does that for him, and the governor sort of reports to the General Assembly, but they are two separate bodies of politics who are independent of one another, and sometimes, as you know, a club. You are both, actually. You are both the governor, that is, you are responsible, you five are responsible for the proper delivery of services to the people in this town. So that is the executive function. So, and you, you do it by delegating responsibility to a professional, and you oversee and you supervise that professional. So I just want to be clear about that, that there's a huge difference between you, who are essentially the legislature and the governor, all rolled in one, and your designated representative, who answers to you. And you and that person are not on the same standing, you don't have the same authority. He has authority, only that was just given to him. So those are some of the big picture thoughts I wanted to share. There may be some dissension from them, and that would be, I would love it if there could be a little conversation in response to that. There are several other, there are another seven or eight smaller points that I would like to make at a later time, if you have the interest in doing so.
Mary? Martha? I'd just like to say, John, last year I spent a lot of time handing out the statutes, talking about the roles. It is not news to the people who've been on this board. It shouldn't be news to the people who are sitting in the public. So I think we know that, and I'm glad that there are people in the public that know that, and I think that you probably should run for the board.
Thanks.
Okay, are there any questions for John, comments?
If we're having a conversation, I, I feel that as a new member of the board, I would like to learn as much as possible from as many people as possible. So I would, I'd love to hear more of what you have to say.
All right, thanks, John.
Thank you. So is it left that you will schedule another time for a more extensive presentation, or?
I think that's gotta be it for now.
I said for now, I'm asking about another time.
Well, I think when we get down to number 11, when we're talking about our next meeting, we could decide whether we're ready for that or not, but, yes, thank you.
Mary, could we ask John to submit something to correspondence?
I encourage, I encourage John to do that. It would be helpful. If you could put your ideas in writing, I know you say what you brought tonight was sort of scattered.
Yeah, and I, I think to, to, I'm happy to provide this to you after I presented. To give it to you without context, avoid the danger of misunderstandings.
Okay.
Would it be possible to give us something to look at before you appear on the agenda?
Sure. Provide for your package, so it's not, there are no surprises.
Well, we haven't decided it's gonna be an agenda. There's a little bit of the chicken and the egg here.
We'd like to know more.
Okay, thanks, John. Okay, let's see. We need to select our official term newspaper. Make sure our agenda here, okay, with the comments. Would someone like to make a motion?
I move to approve the agenda.
Oh, I think we did that.
Oh, sorry, I moved to the official term.
Yeah, number five, which is selecting our official newspaper.
Yeah, isn't it usually the same?
Yeah, we have to select it even though, I mean...
I move to approve the, or select.
How about select?
Select the Valley News as our official newspaper.
Okay, so we're second?
Second.
Okay, thank, that one. And, up a vote, so, Priscilla?
Yes.
Okay, and that?
Yes.
Chemo?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
And, oh, yes. The next item is to set our regular meeting schedule, time and participation. Our normal meetings are the second and fourth Wednesdays. We often have to judge that for holidays. So with motion, she has written, it says second and third Wednesdays of November and December, and I just looked at that. So that would be in November 11th, November 4th and 11th, November 11th, and then in December, it would be December 9th, December 16th. So it's sort of, it means back-to-back meetings, but they sort of protect the holidays pretty well. And we've had other sort of cycle calendars where it would come, like the November one would fall on the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. That makes sense, I don't know if you want to look at your calendars, but we'll kind of have to decide this tonight, I think.
I, I think in general, we just try and avoid the holidays.
Well, yeah, I think the, I think it's good to know when we're gonna meet, so that we are protecting those holidays. But also that when we get to that time, that's budget time. So it would be back-to-back meetings, so it will be, it'll be intense, but I think, okay.
You're suggesting, could you, November, you said?
Well, it's November 4th and November 11th.
So those are two Tuesdays?
Yeah.
Is there a reason? Yeah. Yeah, so, fifth, yeah.
So, okay, let's make sure I get this correct. So, let's go with mine too.
Thanksgiving will be on the 27th, 28th.
You're correct.
I'm not sure, I see why you would.
Move it.
It's, it's only a week away. Well, the vacation week.
Okay, so second and, well, second and third Wednesdays, well, the second Wednesday would be the 11th, right?
Or first and third Wednesdays in November would be the 5th and the 19th.
That's true, talking the Wednesday, sorry.
Or if we do the 12th and the 19th.
12th. Okay, so.
Why would we?
Because that's the, that's the second week we usually do. And we wouldn't do the fourth week because that's Thanksgiving.
Sorry, so we do the second and fourth.
Second, not the fourth. We usually do second, third.
So the 12th and the 19th of November?
Yeah.
Is what I'm hearing. And, and we can do that, that sounds fine.
Well, 19th, and then December, sold backwards. So it'd be the 9th and the 16th.
No, 10th and 17th, if we're speaking about Wednesday. And then we will just be... Yeah, that'll just be a, turn around.
Yeah, it'll be, it's just, we have the heads up now. I mean, we've done that before, but it's, it's just rugged for everybody.
Typically, the second and fourth?
Second, third.
Second and...
So we sort of have, you know.
Every other, every other month except for the number and...
Occasionally, we'll have three weeks, which I always think is a shame. It's a gift inserted, because we're wasting time.
Yeah, we kind of, maybe we need to unwind, we could be more productive sometimes, there's three week gaps. Okay, so see if we get this straight. Okay, so, do you think we need to name those dates in November and December? Or just, I mean, this is, it's outlined in the motion, but to be more specific, or just go about?
Let's be specific.
Okay, so someone wanted to use this?
Okay, I move to set the regular meeting schedule for the Norwich Select Board for the second and fourth Wednesdays of each month at 6:30 PM, with in-person attendance of all board members, unless the meeting is warned. Oh, I wrote this from two years ago.
This, this is...
I didn't get this today.
No.
I didn't get it.
It was sent by Pam, but not to the full board last Friday, so that's why no one else is...
So, well, I'll start again. I move to set the select, the reg, I move to set the regular select board meeting schedule to the second and fourth Wednesdays of each month at 6:30 PM with the following two exceptions. November 12th and 19th, and December 10th and 17th.
All right, second?
And, so, yes. Matt?
Yes.
Chemo?
Yes.
Marsha? Yes.
And, yes. Next one is, you authorize the chair and or vice chair to sign payroll warrants. And this, it's good to have, advocate for authorizing these, so there's a backup. And that's, you know, in case one or the other is from travel, which tends to happen on the 6th or whatever, so, yes.
I, I think for Matt and Chemo to understand, sometimes payroll warrants come out and we're not having a meeting and we don't want to give people paychecks, so.
Yeah.
So without all of us being here and all of us signing it, that would enable the chair and the vice chair.
We never sign payroll warrants.
Yes.
We never sign them.
No, we don't.
Well, only the chair. The chair and the vice chair sign those, and then we also have accounts payable, AP. And those sometimes come off-cycle, so that's the other, and that's, that's on the motion number eight.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, I'll make the motion. I move to authorize the chair and or vice chair to sign payroll warrants.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? We sort of have, that's good, that's good. Any other discussion? Okay, Priscilla, have you phone?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Chemo?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
And on, yes. Okay, now, the next one is about signing AP warrants. Would someone like to move that one?
I move to authorize, excuse, the chair and or vice chair to sign off-cycle AP warrants.
As a second?
A second.
Okay, any other discussion? Questions? Okay, so, Priscilla?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Chemo?
Yes.
Marsha? Yes. And then, yes, okay. Now, the next one is to adopt procedure for receiving correspondence. Documents here, should we go over this a little bit?
Yes, please.
Okay. Which document shall we look at, the one, you have the new set?
I don't think they're very different.
I don't think they are either. That they're just going to be signed if they're exactly the same.
Yeah, if I may, so I, I think what Miranda did for the packet was to put a draft, which is just a clean version that you could sign tonight, and we have a hard copy as well. And then also the current adopted policy, which again, in many cases, is just the same.
Right, so what's, what's our starting point for this? Oh, go ahead, Priscilla.
Um, in the first paragraph, it says that correspondence should be sent to the select board email address, and there have been some difficulties with that. I don't know, we don't have a webmaster, but certainly my preference would be, I mean, that's fine, if those are, but I'd like to have it sent to me individually too, so when it comes out, I can see it.
See the correspondence.
Well, I just want to make sure I get it. Yeah, because it's, there's sometimes, it seems it's been uncertain whether stuff got through to us or not.
I see.
It doesn't seem to have an automatic forwarding or whatever on a webmaster.
So can we talk about the logistics of that, Brennan?
Yeah, I think I can. So right now, the way this was approved last year, they said the select board at norwich.vt.us does not get forwarded on to individuals on the select board. That goes into correspondence at the next meeting, as long as it gets there before the deadline, which is Thursday at noon. And then that is then published in the packet for everybody to see, and there was much discussion... And there was much discussion, at least in the two years that I've been here, about the interest level of select board members of having every piece of correspondence sent to them real time. Or whether it was cleaner to have it all come at one point in a packet where everybody sees it at the same time. So that is the current policy right now. Again, up to the board if they want to change that. But right now, you would not get something individually unless someone sent it to you and your email address individually. And that has happened as well, where people wanted to inform the select board members, but they didn't necessarily either want to have it in the packet or they wanted to make sure it got there sooner than the next board meeting. So that makes sense?
Yeah, could. Can we request that maybe on an individual basis, we'd like it to come to us individually as well as to select board, you know?
That's certainly an idea that we could consider. And we'll, you know, let's keep that, hold that in mind. Marshall?
So we've discussed this multiple times, and my concern, I wrote a memo about this in December thirty first. Basically. Um, the spirit and the intent of the open meeting law is we do our business right here at this table. And. The way we have it set up. And has been set up is it goes to the town manager's office and the information then goes into the packet. We all then see it all at the same time, the public sees it at the same time. And we should not, as members, be discussing it on email, in the grocery store, anywhere. It should be at this table. So, and that's not me, that's law. So that's why I feel that when you. You know, we can't stop people writing to us, that's fine. But we should not then send that on to everybody, because now we're. You know, a judge will tell you if you violated the law or you didn't, but you're in definite. Bad waters. And if people respond to you, now you've got a real problem. So I think the safest, cleanest, most appropriate thing under the open meeting law rules is to have it go to the town manager's office and then we all see it in the.
All right, I now respond to that a little bit. I don't think it would actually. Put us in danger of breaking the law. But it might. And and it is true that. We should be very careful about discussing issues between meetings. So. I don't know, I'm on the fence about it. Go ahead, Persol.
We have sometimes. Shared thoughts with each other about something that was going to come up. And it always was, or or sometimes town managers and and said, do not reply to anyone. Because that, you know, this is for your information, do not reply. That would violate the open meeting law. We started having a discussion online before the meeting. But I think it's sometimes helpful to be able to digest information that's come in. Me, because, you know, packets are sometimes very large. And and sometimes don't get, you know, they come out Friday night. I don't know about you. I don't start looking at them until Saturday morning. Don't really dive into them. Much over the weekend, so then I'm kind of cramming.
I think it could have the effect, you know, that some people get their talentless serve as a digest. And some get it, but I usually do that. And some get it, okay, breaking news.
Right.
So there might be a quality of that to receiving the correspondence. And it might be that the last thing that you get pinged with gets your attention right before the meeting. Or it might be that it is good because you can absorb information one at a time. And then maybe you forget before you get to the later ones. So may- maybe it's also, you know, it's that. So when are you going to really study this and be ready for a meeting and have received all the correspondence that people want to send? So be leaning in favor of the more digest method that we have now. But others may have another idea, and this is certainly somebody to vote on, you know, people go strongly about this, so. Yes, Kimon?
I'm not sure what the mechanism is, but I think my preference would be to get communications. Immediately when they're sent somehow, have access to it. So that as an individual, I have the maximum amount of time between meetings to gather the information. That I will use to have, you know, a wise discussion. If they come on Friday and we're meeting on Wednesday. It really needs to be Monday and Tuesday to shoot around and. Get information that I'm interested in. Uh, but if if somebody leaves a meeting here and sends an email to us that evening to follow up with something they heard, I'd love to have up to two weeks to research. Whatever the issue might be. I don't know what mechanism that. Requires. But waiting and putting it all in the packet. To me, doesn't seem to. Avail ourselves of the maximum amount of time to get things and be able to push things along.
And this referring not not to just individual email messages, which you think anybody could send an email message. But to correspondence where someone has an idea or opinion and they want the whole town to know. So that's really the correspondence, could be in a memo form, could be in an email, sort of a note. Um, but that's what we're talking about with correspondence. So this other communication, you know, could happen anyway. But, okay, the same, Persol?
The reason I would love to have correspondence come to me. As it hits. Supposed to the rest of the packet, you know, thank you for the packet, it's a lot of work. Sometimes somebody says something, you might say. What is, what is going on here? What is going on? And I don't think it's illegal for us to then contact the person who wrote that. Who's obviously not a board member and say. Can you tell me the background why you're sending this maybe, or is there something I don't know that has, you know, provoked this correspondence? And that would be helpful to me when we got into a meeting and and I don't want to have it all jammed up on Monday and Tuesday.
Um, both Marshall and we'll get to that.
I think the problem for me is that if you do that, which I know you like to do. Then you're going to have information, but the next step is like that. And then I've seen it happen. You're here telling everybody what somebody intends. I think, I think the intent here is that we have an open meeting. If somebody wants to communicate with us. It comes to all of us. We all then have an opportunity to look at it, and that's what we, when we redid these correspondence rules. It used to be that the correspondence came in and everybody just said it's part of a consent agenda. We approve it, that's it. And people in town said, but wait a minute, I asked a question and nobody's answered the question. So we put in these three steps in here, you know, this is what we're going to do, board. We're all going to say this needs more inquiry, or we can answer that tonight. Or, you know, this needs to be an agenda item. So Kimon's concerns are addressed in that way. And we avoid any problems with people getting advanced information that the rest of the board doesn't have. Getting too excited and sending out an email to the board and saying, you know, I I think that this is right, we need to talk about this. Um, that it's.
Well, that.
Well, you could have an agenda. Right, right. So I think. For me, I'm telling you all right now, don't send me email. I don't want it. I don't want to hear this until the select board messages, until we all have a chance to see them here. If, I would vote against doing any change, but if we do that, nobody send me anything, please. I want to do the work here as state intent.
There's one. I I think it's possible that the late person thinks that when they send to select board at Norwich. B T dot U S, that it like, we all think that when we send an email to a group, that it gets to the group immediately. And so one of my, like, again, being new here, I, but I expect that I would walk into someone at Dan and Wits. Who might have sent an email to the select board and assume that I've received that email instantaneously. And and that could make for, you know, some awkward conversations. Um, especially because if 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 that person, if it doesn't become clear that I haven't received it. Then they might think that I'm just dismissing them or or not, or not thinking about the topic that is clearly they took enough time to write to us. And so depending on how we fall on this, I think that it leaves some sort of like really sufficient messaging. Or maybe an autoresponder that's put up on the select board email that says this will be included in the packet. You know, your comments are important to us, but the select board members will not read this until whatever, the Thursday before their Wednesday meeting. Or something like, yeah.
So if I may, I think the fifth paragraph here in the procedures, let's talk about that. So when when Miranda or whoever the administrative assistant is, receives that, they do respond. And they say, thank you, we've received this, this will be in the next packet.
Okay.
So they are notified pretty instantaneously that this is not going directly. And I I think there's also on our website a disclaimer there that is maybe something we could refresh. But it it should indicate to people this is not a real time. Communication to the board.
Um, but I I I agree with Kim. I I don't think that we should respond, we should, we should clearly not respond to this if we do receive it real time. Um, but I do think that. I like to think about things for as long as possible, and so any sort of advance, like getting it in real time for me would be personally helpful. Just so I can think about it, give it as as much response as possible.
Okay, thanks, Kimon. Kimon?
Would it be possible for emails and other documents, you go to a shared folder that we could access if we wanted to? Does not being sent to us. But if you encounter someone with Dan and Wits. And they bring something out, say, oh, I haven't seen that yet, you could go look for it. Uh, you're not doing business, we're not talking among each other, but you can access the documents. And at the end of period, all those documents get put in the packet. But in the meantime, as they come in, if I want to, I could go and see what's come in today. Not being sent to me, but I can look at it.
No, I understand. Um, I suspect that that's possible. Like, there could be a shared folder with a password protection where only select board members could view the shared folder. And when Miranda extracts these anyway, is putting them into a folder for the next packet.
Physical.
Well, electronic normally, right? So if somebody sends something, it's normally an electronic transmission. She would put that into an electronic folder to say, okay, when the next packet comes out, we need to make sure we remember to put this in. So so to answer your question, I think that is possible to do, and that would alleviate. People's interest in in seeing things before they come out on the Fridays or before the board meeting. Uh, it wouldn't alleviate the question of, well, I guess it would. It would then be at the discretion of the board member to say, I've seen this, but I need to hold on. Communication about this until maybe the board is formally recognized at the meeting.
Yeah, so one of the reasons I'm asking about this is because if I'm a a member of the town and I send an email and I get something doc saying, oh, this is what we looked at for two weeks or ten days, doesn't feel great. Um, if they get an email back saying this is accessible to the select board. You know, not at their leisure, but it's now accessible to the select board. Uh, then when you have that conversation, you don't say, oh, I won't see it for a week and a half. For the package, and you say, oh, I'll go in and look for it when I get home. Um, which feels better to me, more responsive and. Like something's actually happening rather than put on.
Okay, Marshall?
Yeah, um, the V L C T did a nice Q and A thing about this and other things. But they were talking about Google Docs and Facebook and stuff. And they said the language makes it clear that using electronic communication for purposes of scheduling a meeting, organizing an agenda and distributing materials that are going to be discussed at a meeting is not considered a meeting under the law. Understanding that these three actions are explicitly not considered meetings under the law. Therefore means that other forms of electronic communication between a quorum of members are. If the legislature had intended to make exceptions to the law and allow for a quorum of members to communicate using Google Docs and Facebook, it would have stated so. So I think. You know, if, if you access it. I think you need to be careful if you have a shared file. Then doesn't look like a meeting if four people have gone in there. Because the other thing that you have to be careful is obviously the same document. Is. If members totaling a forum are indicating their approval or disapproval approval or making comments or suggestions via Google Docs, which we're not suggesting here, but whether simultaneously or serially as individual members. The use of the software therefore may be a violation of the open meeting law. So if I could suggest, rather than have to to prove that we aren't violating the open meeting law by everybody having access to an electronic file that could somehow be accessed at the same time by four people. I would suggest for more work for Miranda, print it out into a hard copy, put it in a file in the office. And if people want to walk in and look at that file, then they can see what's going to be in the packet.
And whilst three of them coming together, yeah.
Right.
Well.
You kind of have the same, I mean, it it makes it more cumbersome to view. Again, I I guess I'll I'll let you guys decide how you want to handle it, but that that is a possibility. And I think that is a better option than sending these out to some of the board, but not others. You know, like to me, that's that's pretty unclean, right? We we want to have it either going to everybody or everybody having access or the status quo of. It just doesn't go to anybody's direct email unless it's sent there directly. And you all see it at the same time when the packet gets distributed and the rest of the public gets to see it at the same time you did.
All right. And I'm not too used to being chair was for a while, but I think you're supposed to address your questions to me. I'm wondering if. We can reach consensus on this, because I think, I think it's important that we all operate the same way. So. Persol, go ahead, go ahead.
It just sounds as though we're making it more difficult to be a select board member, more cumbersome. And I feel that. I know we all bring different gifts to the table and I. I think I'm probably the least hardworking person on this board because of the way I like to operate. I really like to operate very directly with people. My favorite thing about this job is running into people. On the side, at the post office, at Dan and Wits, wherever, and they want to ask me about something. And I like that immediacy and I feel it's really important to be very responsive. Um, and I don't think there's anything wrong with me responding directly to a citizen asking me a question about, well, what was going on here? Or something, or what, you know, I I I think that's fine. I think that's a big part of our job. And so. I want to be as responsive as, but I mean, sometimes people talk to me and I say, would you please put that in writing and send it to the select board? Then everybody sees it.
Right.
But but sometimes people just want to write or, you know, I want everybody in town. So. Personally, I, and I'm sorry to say this, but there hasn't been tremendous confidence that everything that went to select board at Norwich. There's some kind of sort of wonder, did it really get to us or did it get lost somewhere? I don't, I mean, I I I don't know, and I don't want to impugn anybody, but, um. I would, I would be very happy if I could just have it go to that definitely, be in the packet, definitely. But maybe we should vote on those options.
Oh, yeah, well, I think we we can certainly vote on how we want to do it. Vernon, did you want to?
I I was just just going to address. I I guess I would need an example of when you felt like something didn't reach you, because I know. We we get a fair amount of volume at different times and different meetings. But I know Miranda and our administrative assistant, who's, you know, has taken this on. And Will, again, when we have an administrative assistant, he's he's pretty diligent. Like, I I can't imagine any examples of when something came in and didn't make it into a packet and just got forgotten. And never made it. So I just, I just say that, because I I unless you had an example in mind of, I know something should have gotten here, but I didn't get it. I I don't know that's accurate.
Persol?
Well, I think all of us didn't get a piece of correspondence, if you want to call it that. That a member of the public wanted all of us to see, but didn't particularly want to put it in the pack. We all just got that last week.
And you sent out a response?
No, I didn't.
Well, to us, and that's, that's not a fact.
So, I mean, let's slow down a little bit. Someone said something to all of us.
Yes.
Didn't want it to be in the packet.
Someone said something to this address. And I guess was talking to some other member of the board, and said, well, I haven't seen that. Then sent it to us individually.
Okay.
Um, and then subsequently said. I this doesn't necessarily need to be in the packet, but I'd like you all to think about it.
Sure, well, that's information, right? It's not, it's not correspondence that we need to share.
Yeah, but that person thought that if I write to select board in Norwich, then it would get told, and they didn't. I mean, may, I mean, maybe it's what's going to be in the next packet.
Okay, so if it had gotten through.
The person sent it twice, basically.
Yes, oh, okay, didn't get through.
No, sent it to select word and then sent it to us individually.
Okay, did that message get through, Brennan? Would you want to select worded?
That that would not have gotten through if you're saying, would that have been distributed to the select board members? Then no, because that would have been something as the protocol calls for, would have gone into the next packet. Now, it is at the discretion of the sender to pull that back and say, I don't want this to go into the next packet. This was not intended for public dissemination. We've had that happen on occasions, or we could, it's been even been asked, now, did you intend that this shows up in a public dot, you know, a public packet for everyone to see? No, I didn't realize that was the case, and then it would be pulled back, so that would be the exception, I guess.
Marsha.
You know, I I know that there's a um, preference to treat this like, you know, it's a small town pub and everybody's friendly and everybody talks to one another. But we, as John pointed out, are a legislative body. And that means you have to do the work of being a legislative body like a legislative body. And you actually, it's not enough to just talk to people. You have to, as it says in the um, state manual, you have to actually read some statutes and do the, do that work. And it's hard, it's really hard. And it's hard to deal with people who don't understand what you have to do as a legislator. And so I think, yeah, we'd all like to be able to be the voice of this is what happened and this is why um, I, you know, I've heard about this. I I've thought about it, but even if you have heard about it and even if you have thought about it, you cannot speak for the board, not one of us. We speak as one body. If we all vote to, if four of us vote one way and one votes the other way, we have all voted with the majority. If I don't like a decision, tough, that's the way it is. And so I think that's the challenge of this work, it's hard and you're not going to get away from it. What I want to do is make sure that we put all of the structures in place so that that hundred thousand dollar lawsuit doesn't come around again when somebody says, okay, I want to see all of the emails that have passed between all of you board members. And then people say, oh, I'm just shocked because I thought all I was doing was, you know, sending this out. That's not what you're doing. And I think we owe it to our town to be a little more careful.
Kimo.
I agree, um, so what I'm uh, asking is not about emailing or contacting one another, but simply uh, a different way to access the information perhaps sooner as it comes in, rather than waiting for the packet. In my mind, when we get the packet, we're getting information before the meeting, we're reading things, we're not all here. And we're able to go out and act on it by getting information or talking to people that might inform our decisions. So I think a shared folder where we have access to it, but can't change the documents, who can read them, is simply, it's the same as the packet, it's simply getting earlier access to read those things, not emailing one another. Nothing to do with that, we're not sharing that because we're not looking at them together in an environment. We're simply able to go in and click on a thing and have it open up as PDF, yeah, change it and read it. Uh, so uh, for me, the way I operate in the world, I would appreciate having a. Yes, sorry.
Go ahead, I'm just saying, I want to say something when you can.
Yeah, no, I think I've finished, but but I'm not trying to email, we're sharing information and discussion among ourselves. I'm simply asking how we. Yeah.
Have you received it and when, okay. Marsha.
I I understand what you're saying. I think that one of the things that we have to do is be very technologically sophisticated so that four of you couldn't be in that quiet at the same time.
Why would that matter for all that you have at the same time?
Um, what about Google Docs? What VLCT said.
Not talking about Google Doc.
Oh, I know, but it's, it's the same principle. You can all look at something at the same time. I I didn't make up the laws, all I'm trying to do is make sure we don't step a foul with them.
Right, so I guess I'm wondering, how was all of us looking at a document online without being able to communicate over it or change it? Any different than all of us receiving a packet? Now we've got the packet, we're all looking at it.
I think because it's electronic.
Right.
I I was just gonna say, as as I'm kind of thinking more about this, so we have the open meeting law. And then we have the Public Record Act, which is basically members of the public could request that they be able to see everything at the same time as their elected officials are. So in effect, again, I don't know if that would be something someone would want to do. They could say, well, I want to see everything that's in that shared folder at the same time that my elected officials are going to see it. So I'm as much as good as they, that would kind of negate any sort of a privacy or a select board only viewing privilege.
Can you say that again?
So so as I'm thinking about how that could work, Kimo's idea was that every document comes in, it's basically becoming a public document at that point, it's going to go into a packet in the future that everybody gets to see. And in our process now, we're holding that to a date certain when everybody sees it at the same time. And in Kimo's uh, request, he would be able to see that earlier than that. And somebody else wanted to see it earlier than that, I don't know that we could say, no, this is privileged in any way. I think they would have the same rights of access as an elected official. And I just thought of that as we were having that that other discussion.
Marsha.
I think that um, the distinction from what the VLCT says and kind of what the law says is that you're all, you know, if you make the analogy, if you all go to um, coffee and and donuts at the um, at the police station. And you're all, you know, the majority of us are there, we can't talk about any business. If a majority of us are in that electronic room, that filing room, looking at these documents, I'm not saying what the court would say, but I'm saying it doesn't look so good. Just because we're in that space together.
Yeah, I I think we're actually talking about two different things, but but I understand, I understand the concern very deeply. Um, but if if you look at a Google Drive folder, um, I can't tell if anybody else.
Yeah.
There's no way for me to, um, unless you set it up that way. So that that's really, really.
Google Docs.
Yeah, the Google Docs is a different thing. This is simply a a a neutral folder that some people have access to, some people can edit, some people can only view, some people can share, some, yeah, it's easy to set up. Uh, but if I can view it, that's my only permission, I can't change it, I can't share it, I can't.
Can't copy it.
Can't, um. Maybe copy it to my own. Oh, well, I think you can set it up. Yeah, you can set it up.
So. Marsha.
So theoretically, you could copy it to your own computer and then send it out to people.
In the same way we can with our packets.
Right.
Yeah. It's it's no different. It's just. I don't see that uh, public access is a problem. Personally, they they have that to the packet when it comes out.
Well, again, uh, having been the recipient of multiple public record act requests, it is, it does happen in Norwich often. You spend a lot of time and money going through the process and it's uh, it's not terribly effective or efficient on the administrative side. And I have to do that often. It takes a lot of time.
It may be wise to keep the process simple, as it is now, everybody starts at the same time to, you know, absorb the material. There's always a tremendous amount of uh, material, sometimes these packets are like two hundred pages long. It is nice to be responsive, but I think this entire process forces us to slow down, be deliberate and try to be, try to be fair about everything. I don't think I would be checking the folder every day. I would prefer to kind of have my select board business be in manageable chunks because of all the other things I have to do. So I I would advocate for keeping it the same. But that doesn't mean that we members might have a very different idea, okay? So if there is someone who feels really strongly about this, you know, there should be a motion to amend that section, I think. So.
And I have one last question, it's not, it's, it's, uh, is there a, is there a way that is set up for somebody to send something to all the select board members that they don't want in the packet, or is that a violation of open meeting? We 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 just had that example, so, yeah.
Well, sorry, Mary, through Mary.
Well, okay, hang on a minute, I I think, I think, no, I think what the problem is, is is if select members discuss it. Information coming separately, no, that's just a citizen talking to five elected officials. But if we talk about it, you know, before we're in a one meeting, that I think, it's not, not good. I mean, it could be five phone calls.
I guess, I guess I was, I specifically, I was talking about the situation where if someone, if a citizen sends it to select board at, like the select board email address, but doesn't want it distributed, put it in the packet, it just wants it to go to all five members just for them to read. Is there a method set up for that? Yes.
Brennan.
So the method there would be that someone would send it to each individual or the group.
Yeah.
Via their individual email addresses.
Okay, perfect.
And then they would see it.
Yeah.
The the risk there again is if one member or multiple members say, well, geez, we got to do something about this and sends an email replying all, geez, can you believe this is happening? Then you have an open meeting law violation, because you've discussed public, you know, the public uh, process and action of the board outside of an open meeting. And that's, that's the criteria this one set, if you can't do it.
Okay, that makes sense.
And it happens, I mean, I will say, it's very tempting for people to say, geez, you know, making a comment outside of what's allowed, which is an agenda setting, I don't know, I know, meeting uh, scheduling or what was the third? I can't remember. There were, there were three things you could start.
Meeting confirmation.
Yeah, like the packet, like, yes, so do we agree that this packet and the agenda are going to be um, approved and that's allowed? But other than that, truly, email or phone call or anything else, you really know it's supposed to be having that discussion outside of an open meeting.
Uh, John.
Okay, public comment in this discussion.
Uh, well, a brief one, yes, yeah. Um, and and can everyone hear? Do you want to come?
If you want to, if you come up to the table, I will.
John Carroll. Uh, Vermont statute very clearly says that a, less than a plurality or a um, less than a majority of the board could confer and and can talk about board matters, very clear. Um, uh, and so a quorum for this board is three. More than, more than, it's a, the number necessary to pass legislation in this board is three. That's a quorum. Statute says that a number less than the quorum is entitled to meet and discuss board matters. They can do it by email and all, you just can't do reply alls and stuff like that. But it's very, very, very clear that, first of all, the board can visit and talk about administrative matters, like when times the next meeting. You can do that in person, you can do it in in writing. You can also go to parties and talk about everything with board members, right? All five of you can have a great time. Um, probably if you were at a social gathering, you'd be very happy not to be talking about board members. So I've just, uh, what seems to be overlooked here is that there is a threshold and the number is two. And that means that that George can write to Alice and Alice can write back to George. Alice can take George's email and send it on to Priscilla. The statute is very clear about this. Uh, yeah, I, it feels like, just to an outsider, that this board is unbelievably gun shy about um, uh, the open meeting law. I think you have good reason to be, since you spent a hundred thousand dollars defending um, your own mistakes, not yours personally, but the board's. Uh, the board was found guilty of violating the open meeting law on three and four counts. And um, so I understand why you're skittish. I think though, uh, I would just advocate, you should read what the statute says. It's, 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 the language is plain, you don't need an attorney. Law is written by ordinary people like all of us in the room, not by attorneys. It's legible to ordinary people in the room. And um, it and sections three ten one to three ten four make it very clear that any two of you can talk with each other about anything. That's my only comment, I'm a chairman.
Okay, Marsha.
Um, John, I don't know if you've read the statute since it's been changed, amended. Um, but it's a little different now. And it says, um, meetings shall not mean any communication, including in person or through email, telephone or teleconferencing between members of a public body for the purpose of scheduling a meeting, organizing an agenda or distributing materials to discuss at a meeting, provided no other business that the public body has discussed or conducted. And such communication that results in written or recorded information shall be available for inspection and copying under the Public Records Act. So I think, uh, as the VLCT said, the law could have specifically said more, but it didn't. And so not, no.
Three ten, actually, one, three ten four specifically say that when two people are talking, it's not really.
Four is now hybrid meetings, it's been changed, you need to read the the new law. So I respectfully disagree with you. And where I don't think we are gun shy, I think we are abiding by the open meeting law. And we absolutely don't need another lawsuit.
You made a class.
We did not.
All right, so uh, this agenda item is the receipt of correspondence, so we should sort that out. When we get to um, procedure, when we get to our um, under organizational business, if you want to, for instance, on March 12th, have a review of the current open meeting law statute, I think that is recommended, that we're just all on the same page about that. So I think we need to wrap this one up. Um, people feel strongly about this shared folder, somebody want to make a mention? And see here, the the motion, the suggested motion, this is just keeping everything the way that's, this suggested one, so move to adopt the procedure for receipt of correspondence as presented. Okay, but we could amend it if, you know, there's a strong urge to do that. I'm not going to do that because I want to stick with the status quo here. So you guys think about it.
I know we were talking existing system.
Okay, so Kimo has moved. To, okay, so, and Matt is the first here. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor of the other discussion. Okay, so motion. Uh, Kimo's motion, what, okay, was it this one, Kimo?
It was retained, uh, we adopted procedure for the receiver course as presented.
Okay, so this is, Kimo voted to adopt the procedure for receipt of correspondence as presented secondly by Matt. And let's have a vote, so Priscilla.
No.
Okay, Matt?
Yes.
Okay, um, Kimo?
Yes.
And Marsha?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay, I think that was a worthwhile discussion, but we need to move on, I think. Okay, so our next, the next agenda item is um, we want to open and see.
Madam Chair.
Um, yes.
May I cir, should I circulate this while you're all here to to get signatures?
Yes.
Okay, I will send this down, starting with Marsha.
So are we? So are we. Are the rules and procedures. State um statutory framework, public information. Um, or statutes there, public records. Access to language. Madam Chair, yes.
Um, I made some some notes because again, statutes have changed.
Okay, so should we figure out which document we're looking at as well? As I'm saying, at least it was. Font and this. Same, just a different font. So. But which one did you say? Okay, so we're all are we all looking at the same. Select rules and procedure, so on the um. Okay, not sorry, okay. That's Brennan. I'm sorry, which one there's two.
So so if I.
Yes.
So I think with the the one that we would be looking at to amend, not the one that's currently in place. As a footer, that says select board rules and procedures twenty twenty five.
Okay, so draft on it?
Bottom left, it probably says draft at the top.
Okay. So are we looking at that ones?
So so that would be the one that if uh if you come to a consensus here, we would circulate for signatures after amendments are made if they are.
Okay, and and in circulating this draft, has anything changed from last year, for instance, were there updates to the statutory citations?
I know.
Okay.
The draft, well, Marsha's saying.
Marsha's saying.
Are to be made, but but what you've seen in your packet right now is what you have currently as of last year. And what you would look to change or or approve this year.
Okay, so um. Since the statutory thing um. Attribution first, maybe we should. Uh, we could talk about that. Marsha, do you have uh information on any of these statutes?
Yeah, I I did another document just to. Because I had a lot of things I would suggest. Um. One of the things that we took out last year, but we had prior to that was that we keep a printed copy of these statutes located in the meeting room. And I always carry them around with me, but I think as you can see tonight, we talk about them. But they're kind of handy, but we don't have to put that in here, but. I, okay, it was there once before.
Okay, just an amendment, play the bodies, yeah, okay, what else?
Um, the statutes have changed, they're a lot length lengthier, so. I've changed uh one V S A, section three ten definitions, I just put that in there. As as that without any sort of descriptor. One V S A three twelve, right to attend meetings, and I sort of note a bene. Um, one V S A three twelve H, public should be given reasonable opportunity, express its opinion on matters considered by the public, that's already in there. One V S A three twelve A.
Oh, did, okay, three twelve A, yeah, that's that's an addition, yeah.
Meetings of public bodies state of emergency. I can hand this to you later. One V S A three thirteen, executive sessions. One V S A three fourteen, penalty enforcement. And um, the access to public records, one V S A three seventeen, small A, it's not a parentheses.
Or doesn't have a parentheses?
No, it's management of public records.
Okay.
And then I'm based on those, I I've added a few things within the body.
Oh, you mean explaining the statutes?
No, just um. In terms of under organization, under um. Flushing out what we've just been talking about. So I can read them to you if you want. I was gonna put them on board, but can't do that because we don't have any. Technology at the at the moment.
Okay, so. What you were first referring to is just adding um. A reference to a statute about emergency meetings.
Yes, and.
Three twelve A.
And changing.
And changing the parentheses in uh section three seventeen.
Well, you can see the first one was one V S A three ten, one through four.
Mm-hmm.
They're all different now, so I just took out the one through four, just three ten, it's a long statute.
So the one through four, it's irrelevant now, right, okay, so it's just. I'm sorry.
It would seem really helpful if we all had copies of.
We can make copies, right?
But I mean, shouldn't it be in the packet then? So maybe for next week?
Well, it was in tonight's packet, I think.
Not what Marsha's reading.
Oh, I see.
Draft is, but she she's making some suggestions. It would be very helpful to have those suggestions in front of us.
Okay, um. Well, we do have to come up with our rules of procedure though.
Tonight?
I think so, so we can proceed. You know, so we can operate. Would you like to, Brennan, could you make copy?
You could, I I think.
If if anybody wants.
Please. That would make it much easier to understand what you're saying.
Okay, I will I will try to make some copies. Return successful.
Okay.
Um, give me drive home and.
And then you just sort of take a break till it comes back.
Right.
Break. So we're fifty.
I'm with a sheep. I'm with a sheep.
It's so active in the winter, they're amazing. They they jump.
Really? Oh, because the snow's so high?
What they do, they they jump and they pirouette to stay warm.
That's cool.
And they chase each other because they're hurrying out.
Yeah.
So one goes, the other follow.
I'm gonna need a sheepdog next.
Yes. Are two dogs, I'm not sheep, not even close.
My daughter's got a corgi and he loves to to do that sort of thing.
Before he?
Yeah, it's really funny.
Will the Australian terriers of the, we just sent a sheep though.
Hmm. My husband.
They can. They're able to herd huge flocks of sheep and they're worth a lot of money.
So yeah, I'm sure they are.
I've heard of dogs individually eighty thousand dollars.
Do you realize that the sound is still on, the speakers are on? We're hearing all of your conversation.
We're happy to share conversations about sheep.
But it's being recorded.
Now on the hook to buy the sheepdog. Agenda item six. Action.
Now again, we're already going standard.
Yeah, it's good. These are fine, they're they're rated from minus thirty to sixty five. And what it means is above sixty five. Now, you figure two mark back.
Those are like my favorite.
I was on the school across everybody, one kid said, my mom has those boots.
That, I I had mine for fifteen years, it's just what I have now. Yeah, I just replaced some of the same thing. Your mom, uh, they might be mom, which right? Or the different. It's what?
Dry shirt.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, very similar, my dad boots, yeah.
Fantastic, right?
Good thing I got my ashes this morning.
Ashes to go.
I said, give me my ashes. I said, please give me a blessing. I could use one right now.
That's good.
They don't stay on my face, you know? Or hell.
No, they're different qualities in town.
I said.
You know, committees and.
I don't know.
I think some are more durable. Are they?
What that makes me do in the church is save some of the funds from the. This is make sure. This is this is really helpful, thank you.
Yeah, so unfortunately, the color didn't come out, but um we're grateful for the copies. Um, I had thought we'd have the television and I can put it up on the screen. So just going through it, um, I added. And these are suggestions. Number three, Vermont law does not give the chair of a board particular authority except that. For that which is delegated to him or her by the rest of the board. Two?
Oh, did you get this? Organization, okay.
Oh, they're spawning. Did you miss one?
Yeah.
Okay, we're all good?
The chair has no special, I'm on number three, second sentence. The chair's not. Yeah, this chair has no special authority to control what is on the agenda and is generally responsible only for running the board meeting. And for keeping order during the meetings and for making sure that the decisions of the board are carried out by staff. That's from municipal law basics. Then on the next page. On number five. Second sentence, unless a board authorizes an individual board member to make a public statement about the board's policy or position. An individual member of the board does not have the power to speak to the board. Number six, all members will respect the town manager form of government elected by the voters in Norwich. Questions about any aspect of government will be submitted to the town manager in writing for inclusion in the next packet. And talk about why, put that in there. Number seven. Um, oh, basically, I put a notation on the side of that one, so no violation of the meeting law and we get it at the same time.
No, I can hang on, is that for number six?
Six, yeah. Okay, then for number seven, to avoid inadvertent violations of the so-called open meeting law, members will only communicate outside of. Duly warned, meeting for the purpose of a scheduling of scheduling a meeting, organizing an agenda, or distributing materials to discuss at a meeting. Provided that no business of the public body is discussed or conducted. And that any such written or recorded information shall be available for inspection and copying under the Public Records Act pursuant to one V S A three ten five B. Um.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah, yeah.
Hey, uh, reading that. That sounds different than than the fact that we're allowed to speak. One, like that two people can talk about stuff. Is it saying that that we can't as two people?
It's saying what it's saying that we can't talk about business.
Even if it's just two, even if it is not a.
Yeah. Um, I think what John was referring to was something else in the law. The law has just changed. I'm citing it here.
Okay, so you're citing V S A three ten five B.
Yeah.
What you're saying was. Added.
Yes, which you can see, I've got it here.
Okay, and I I'm gonna look at it visually.
Section three ten, so I do it's current then. Then, um, the next thing I I suggest to add under meetings.
And where are you there?
This is on page three. The subtitle heading of meetings. Number one, meeting, and this is from statute, it's the new definition of statute. Meeting means a gathering of a form of the members of the body for the purpose of discussing the business of the public body. Or for the purpose of taking action, but not for scheduling a meeting or organizing an agenda. And then, um, number two. I added a section because I'm thinking ahead. We could have climate problems, which mean we can't get into Tracy Hall for some reason. Uh, for cold, um, climate issue problems because the boiler breaks down. Or we're just renovating for some reason. So I added um a clause at the end. Or at such other location in Norwich if required due to the physical impossibility of meeting in Tracy Hall. And then finally, under public participation, number six. It says, um, the last line is members of the body. And members of the public are prohibited from making personal, impertinent, threatening, or proclaiming remarks. And I'm just mindful, but there are some recent cases that looked at that kind of a subjective decision. And I think. We don't really need the word impertinent. You know, you, if the chair sees it. The chair will know it, but I think having to define what is impertinent is probably not a good plan.
How much love you?
Need all the blessings out from here.
There, can we back up? Yes, let's back up. So Martha stated her um occupations, so we saw a demand to weigh in.
Um, yeah, I have. It just occurred to me, reading the, the draft, so it was in the packet. Um. Under any requirements, I don't think I see any here that say. There has to be physical, I thought we had to have a physical location. And that maybe at least one board member is supposed to be there or?
Well, person has to be there.
Well, yeah, but I mean, could that be just a jam person with nobody else in the row?
No, not by law.
No, okay, so. I mean, does that mean one select word person or maybe just Brennan's here?
Definition, hybrid meeting means a meeting that includes both a designated physical location. And a designated electronic meeting platform. Um, so I take it back. I was thinking back to COVID, remember, we were, Mary had to sit here by herself.
Oh.
Right, um, but those those rules went away and now we can have completely um. Remote meetings or we can have hybrid meetings, what we have to do is advertise them in advance. So when we once had a meeting advertised as hybrid and. At the police station and everything failed and we couldn't do it, we have to cancel the meeting.
Right, yeah.
And art, isn't it true also that the completely unlimited sort of emergency, right? There's no other way to do it.
No, no, I think we can.
Carefully like a work task.
We can't, we need to.
No, I don't think there's a requirement that you have to have it. You do have to have it available to the public, so. Right, so it has to be zoomed.
I I think. If I may, I so I think that might have been something that changed last year as well with the uh, there was a new policy that was. Uh, that was approved and again, I I do believe we might have a requirement that we have to have a physical location. And we have the opportunity to also have the hybrid or we could just have the leading person, so. Pretty sure that was what got passed there like last summer.
Yeah, you're probably right, because that's not. Open meeting law per se, that's.
Yeah, that was a state, a state um. Reaction, I think, to the question of should towns and and public bodies be meeting in person only, hybrid only, or. The hybrid model and and they went with the hybrid model, but I think there was a requirement that some. The hybrid model and and they went with the hybrid model, but I think there was a requirement that some some physical access had to be maintained.
All right.
But I don't, I'm not sure.
Tell us why.
I'm not sure we have that in.
In all ages. It's even catch, big catch.
So whether that's. If I may, Mary.
Uh, go ahead.
Whether that's something that needs to be codified in the procedures or whether we're just following. The the law, I I guess it's up to the board whether. Want to research that to be sure and include it. Or whether we just want to leave it as it is and know that that's what has to happen.
Look for that and just make sure. Is it possible to be reference to where we meet? Yes, there is meetings. Okay, regular meetings. Oh, we, you know, we, if we wanted to amend this to include the hybrid meeting of the, could you, of the meetings number one, right? Regular meeting took place in the second and fourth Wednesdays, six thirty Tracy Hall meeting room. And then just add, um. With the, what would we call it, hybrid op-ron or? Or online access, something like that. Which paragraph, Mary? Hopefully I don't say. Oh, meetings number.
Meetings only one.
Number two.
Oh, yeah, number two on Marches, number one on the, the, the. Yeah.
So calling the documents, okay. Anyway. Right in the meeting, she'll take place in second floor. Yes, two on Marches. Or it's, and I added that such other locations. It required, and then you wanted to add what? Well, if. We were just talking about that the meetings have to be hybrid. So. You know, it could, where are they happening? They're happening in Tracy Hall. Another location if there's a disaster, but also, uh, online, right? Okay, so we'd say also via Zoom. Also via online. Platform. Just for that. Because the other location would be online.
But I thought we were required as a select or not, maybe not every single community or level. I thought we were required to be hybrid.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes, but I don't think that we have that.
That's why I'm saying that under our meetings, which number two on Marches. Probably if you just added that hybrid aspect to that, um, paragraph or that sentence. I mean, they could be, you could even just say regular hybrid meetings. If that would take one more to fix that.
Yeah.
Let's do that. You want to do that or to suggest that? Does that sound acceptable, everybody?
Sure.
Okay, so that's just one word change.
Well. Okay, shouldn't we also, in that case, regular hybrid take based on the. Tracy Hall, I think that is new address to be published.
It could be explained more, um, like that. Uh, let's see. Where, how should we do it? Let's see.
If it's hybrid, you've got two locations, one.
One's online.
One physical and one online.
Yes.
And we may as well state that it's going to be on Zoom rather than Facebook.
Okay.
Based on.
Well, if if I may.
Yeah.
Uh, so we we have Zoom currently. Uh, I don't know.
You just say online.
Yeah, I I would not have a corporate. I could see in there.
So, um, for us to be published in your backs.
But it already always is.
Has to be noted. I think we're probably okay with hybrid, even though it doesn't really unpack how it happens. Okay.
That's Mary, Mary, my question still was. Is there a requirement that some member of the board be at the physical location? I I and I don't know. I don't.
See, I don't remember that.
I don't, if I may, Mary.
I'm sorry, yes.
That's okay. I just want to make sure.
Yeah.
Going for you. Uh, so I don't believe it has to be a member of the board, but I think a physical location has to be available. So it could be someone here, staff or. Anyone, I think, that would allow a public member who can get on a hybrid to walk through the door and be able to participate in a meeting. I think that was the the thought behind it.
I think there would have to be a mediator, sort of, you know, whether it's.
Not just.
A board member or or town manager, because you'd have this interaction. With the physical space and the hybrid. So you you would not just remember public, it would have to be one of us or or, uh, you know, rather than somebody.
Yeah.
That, right?
Well, I would. I was wondering about that, but it doesn't, it doesn't specify, and I don't know whether we need to specify.
So if I may. Marsha. Um. Statutes provide a floor, you know, you can't go below the floor. But you can get more restrictive. So we could certainly say, we think it's important to have a person here.
Right.
Okay. We just assume that or should we state it? I said, just assuming personally.
Yeah. I'm the mindset that leave things as loosely, loosely defined as possible, because then you're not painting yourself in a corner.
Right. Okay. Um, other, you have more comments for Saul? Let me think about two if you can later. No. A a number of public who wanted to speak, and I wanted to try to get through. Okay, Matt, do you have?
No.
Questions or suggestions?
We, no.
Long jump, okay. Uh, Kimo, any more edits?
No.
And we heard Marsha's. Okay, um, John, would you like?
Very quick.
Um. Come on up, so the.
John, John. Well, I will. Um, am I right in understanding that this is documented, these amendments to the the rules of procedure? Was or was not included in the packet?
Was not.
Was not.
The. Well.
It is, isn't the board's practice? To take action on new language that the board has never seen before?
Okay, so we did have in the packet, you have the, um. Rules of procedure that we had last year.
Precisely. You're not taking action on that.
Wow.
You're proposing significant amendments to those rules.
That's true.
That's true. Those rules were not presented in advance for discussion or consideration. I thought it was your custom not to spring surprises on the board, but to have. All documents will be considered included in the packet in advance. Just, just asking.
That's a good point. Um, I also think that a person could be. Thinking about changes, maybe have some notes and speak to them. In this case, I think it was kind of complex because of the language, so basically seeing someone's notes. So I'm not seeing the distinction between. You know, full disclosure. Perhaps it's better. I don't know. Marsha, would you like to? Well, I mean, I think. I would have happily talked this through like we do at every single meeting about every single thing. But I felt it would be easier for the board to be able to see it. And my intention was to put it up on the screen, but there was no screen tonight, so. I don't know. I think maybe we're splitting hairs.
Possibly.
Kimo?
Would it be possible to adopt the existing, uh, rules procedure that everyone has had a chance to look at? And modify them. Put it on the agenda for the next meeting. And modify them. Maybe give people a chance to review the change of rules opposed.
Well. We we consider that, so. I like that. You like that idea?
Yeah.
Well, we still have to get, we still gonna have to have goals and do more organizing in the next meeting, so maybe that would be the fairest way to do it. I I wouldn't have a problem with that as long as we change the the top, the statutory stuff, because it's wrong. Well, that that should just possibly be a. Town manager update to the administrative update to laws that are changing, sort of changing, but, um, yeah. It should be the the current law, but, okay, it probably wouldn't hurt. Well, we'll get to that rule, uh, between the organizing. Have any other suggested amendments? So it would just be tabling this to our next meeting, probably. This sounds like we've had a chance to talk about this. And we want to give the public a chance to see some of the changes that were suggested that were not in writing. So maybe we just table this one to the next meeting. That makes sense? And we have to have a motion to do that. We want, right? Um, Brennan?
So if I may make a suggestion, um, so I think. If if we're gonna, if you are going to adopt something tonight, I just need to know specifically what it is that's being adopted and if there are amendments, specifically what those amendments are. If we were gonna table the changes that were presented tonight, which again, I think at every meeting I've been to, only three now. There's been discussion about changing and making amendments and then approving them on on the spot at this meeting. If these are too kind of complex and, uh. And there are so many changes that you need to look at them, I suggest we put this document that Marsha has circulated into the packet. So that everybody gets to see these before the next meeting. The Polygama Board, and then I guess if you were gonna table proving this or.
You're being certain.
Yeah, then then you would have the opportunity to come back, maybe the first order of business of the next meeting would be to adopt the table. Um, policies and procedures.
That's what I was thinking. Marsha? Yeah, I think that's fine, and I think that it needs to be further reminded with the things that we're mentioning tonight. About hybrid and I'd like to just look that up again. Okay, Kimo?
Is it legal to table the rules of procedure?
Well, we. Here's the thing. Please, yeah, I think, Marsha? I think that, um, there are existing rules of procedure. And what we're trying to do is amend over this year, so we're not without rules, we're just without rules that are accurate anymore.
What do you?
Well, may not mean so that. We may be stuck with it in order to be transparent, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so would you like them off? I'm just. I'm sorry.
I just just wanted, so if if we are gonna go the route of tableing and then taking this back up at the at the next meeting next week. I would maybe suggest we don't change anything and it's all done in one fell swoop as opposed to. Let's change the statutes and maybe the hybrid. Yeah, just to me, it would be cleaner just to to do the whole thing at once.
Okay, I don't. One understand.
So, well.
Thank you, what you pick up, man? He wants to rely on the old. Procedures until we improve the new ones. Oh, so other ones, we would just, um, approve our existing rules of procedure and then possibly make amendments. Except you're saying. Well, you're saying except for the statutory ones, we just update them next time, too.
That's, that's.
Okay, that might be the simplest way to do that. Oh. So that makes the motion very. Easy. And I move to table. The consideration of. The board procedures. Now, hang on just a minute. Um, if I understand, at this point, I understand that Brennan's. Suggestions is to adopt what we have been using. In all, with all the works, like, you know. You have to adopt. Well, I'm just, I want to be clear about what we're, what we're really doing here. Okay, so are we? Adopting what we've had and then amending on the twelfth because we want to have a set in place? Or are we just tabling the entire thing and then having a a better presentation in the packet? That has, uh, you know, the changes. That we vote on that. So, Marsha? Well. My suggestion is that there's no expiration on the existing procedures. And we always do adopt new ones. But we want to table the presentation. Or the adoption of new rules until we can locate another. Leading version.
Right.
Right, so basically, I think. Um. The motion would most certainly would be to table. The adoption of the rules of procedures. Until the next meeting. Okay, that makes sense to me. Brennan, do you have?
Sure, well, I I think that's the cleanest way you could do that. My only concern is that you have two new members of the board who haven't approved the procedures that were adopted last year. Does that cause any concern? And that will be the only reason you would adopt the current procedures as written and then take them maybe back up for review at the next meeting.
But we have three of us who have signed the old ones, so that's a quorum.
That's true. I didn't think of the three. So so Matt and Kimo, if if you're, if you're okay with, uh.
As Marsha mentioned, if it's a forum voting for it, then we all have to. We're done. Yeah, we're joining a slide for.
Yeah, so so maybe, maybe my, maybe my, uh, concerns are tougher. So maybe, again, just a table tonight and a pick up as the first item of, goes no shit the next meeting is.
Oh, it's a good thought.
Um, overly cautious. It's, uh, catchy.
It is. So Martha, do you want to? Move that. I moved that. You want me to do it again?
Yes.
Um. I move to table. The adoption of rules of procedures. Until the March twelfth meeting. With a clean copy. Of suggesting changes. Okay, so your second.
I'll send it.
All right. And let's have a vote. Uh, so.
Yes.
Okay, Matt?
Yes.
Kimo?
Yes.
Marsha?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, other organizational personnel.
I'm Jeremy. I.
I'm sorry.
A question? It's a procedural question for the town manager's office. So should Marsha? Change the, there was talk about changing hybrid or adding hybrid in there. And that was the only other addition I heard that was outside of what Marsha's presented here. And then send a clean copy. To me to then be placed into the packet for the next meeting. That's, I'm just, we're not gonna print this and then have a hybrid crossed out and then, and then, right, we're gonna have a clean version. So. Accurate, okay. This will not confirm.
I do, I'll, I'll do that.
Okay, so you'll send me something.
Yeah.
Before packets go out. Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, tomorrow.
Yeah, we have a tight, tight turn.
Okay.
I'm sure, uh, what does we need to decide? Any edits and reminder to take place in the, uh, uh. New rules to be here to be adopted at meeting, have to take place in that. We're not moving.
Well, actually, that, yeah, if it's, if we're just sending the. I mean, the only thing that we do is to be. More transparent about how we're doing it. That's really the only difference is to extend like, um, the lead. The, um, chance for the public to see the proposed changes. That have been said on in the document, so. I think that's the only difference.
Well, as a board member, I'd like to be able to just kind of look at this in a little more detail, too.
That's true. Well.
Yeah, I would like, I I think that these were a lot of change. And someone who's, this is a lot of changes. And it's very hard to, without being able to see it up there and see the highlights and stuff, even recognize what's different from one to the other. And, uh, and it seems like these are important, but we're all signing off on this is our way of conducting things, so I I think that. I'd like some time to read it, understand it, and then discuss it before and maybe make small modifications to it at the next meeting and then adopt and and adopt that.
Okay, but I mean, we could still, we'd be being a real pain and getting their own way if we, you know, really amend the whole thing again next time. You know what I mean?
Yeah.
Pretty much, yeah.
I think that's what we're talking about, so we may find it as such in the same way we're going to. Put it off, table it again, and follow it on it, because we can edit it and pass it around.
That is good. Marsha? Um, I'm wondering if I could send the thing, copy to Brennan. And Brennan, as he's done in the past, send it out to the board. We've all seen it before. That gives you plenty of time, right?
Mm-hmm.
We don't talk about it. We just have it. And then, is it possible next meeting? If there are tweaks, we could do it right on the computer. And I could send it to you and we could print it and we could sign it.
And I could send it to you and we could print it and we could sign it.
Oh.
Well, so so sure.
Let's hear its answer to that.
Well, certainly I can send out an informational only. Message to the board that would have the document that we're gonna see, we're also gonna see this probably by Friday afternoon either way. So the question of real time editing and printing and signing, I mean. I I would hope that whatever this document is, it's gonna be pretty close to the. Final document that's gonna get approved on the twelfth. And we do, we are able to approve as amended and then make amendments to a document and have that kind of retroactively done. That's that's normally how we've done it is approve the mode the procedures as amended with the changes. And then we could send it out, I guess, after the. After the amendments are made for signature.
Kimo?
How was that different than?
Do you know?
Takes us more time to read it over, think about our thoughts, contribute our thoughts, and then. And then vote on it, like if we have smaller amendments, I think it's just the scale of this that is that that I think is worth. Thinking about.
More time.
Yeah.
I I was, if I may, I was just, I again, in my two years here, I think every year there have been tweaks that have been made. And amendments and then it's been approved the same night as the organizational meeting, I think the difference here is. It is a little more complex, the scope of the changes presented are probably more than people are. You know, anticipating, so to me it makes a lot of sense to let people take a look at it.
Well, we give a, we give board members and the public a little more time to digest. But, you know, adjust for this. Okay.
So we've gotten this topic, um Mary? Marcia? Would it be helpful if I send it out and it's got the highlights for the changes? And then text box on the side for each one to explain why? Does that help?
Uh, that has always helped in the past, presented that way.
Okay, so I can do that. And then, as Brennan suggested, we can make our changes and remove the changes at the meeting and then sign it later.
Okay, so with your track changes document, would that be part of that? Okay, and that would be a cleaner way than notes on the side like this, I mean.
Yeah.
Track changes is pretty.
For myself to talk to you because I thought I had another copy to put on the board.
Yeah, okay, well.
Did we vote on motion like?
We voted to um table.
We did vote to.
Yeah, we're just, we're just trying to uh. Figure out if. Uh. I don't know. On track. I think we're okay. All right, are are we done with this topic? Do we need to move on? Okay, the next is eleven is other organizational business. Um. I think during this agenda, I would like to talk about um our next meeting. Which will include these rules of procedure, we'll talk a little bit about the agenda for the next meeting. So we're gonna clear up the rules of procedure. And um. I think it would be wise if we uh set goals for both the town manager and ourselves. We need to evaluate the town manager. And we do or actually deal with the town managers. Um, form. That would stand with that, or or we're gonna really update it because. Number one, we might have different goals, and number two, maybe there's tweaks to that document too. So I would recommend those things, Marcia?
So I was gonna suggest that um we have, everybody wants to write a memo. Suggesting ideas for the fifty thousand foot view because. Um, we really only have a year to work together, things will change next year. And it would be good to see us. Discuss what we would like to try to accomplish, things that are obviously within the board's jurisdiction. So that we can uh identify town goals and as Mary said. Because of the town manager's contract. We have to do that with the town manager, so we would want his input. And then agree on priorities and maybe some low hanging fruit because. Most of the things that we might be talking about are things that are gonna cost money. But some things might not be. And then we should um decide how we can divvy up the work. So that a member potentially could uh prep something like. We were gonna do last year some things, the financial. Policy is woefully out of date, the gift policy I've already got ready to go. Um, and then that becomes an agenda item, but just for all of us to decide what things need attention. And that includes input from the town manager. And then um. Of course, you know, we factor in the funding issues. To the extent, unfortunately, because of the way um things have fallen out here in terms of timing. When you put together the goals and things for the town manager, that should be goals that the person. It's the goal for the town, but the town happenings are conducted by the town manager. And so if we said to the town manager, you, we want you to do this, and he agreed, yes, I'll try and do that, but. You know, earth catastrophe number twelve happened and he couldn't do it, then um. That's, you know, you take that into account, but what I think we should try as a board to get into is. At this time of year, start talking about those goals that we have. And those goals become what are put in place for the next year for the town manager.
For the coming year, right?
For the coming year.
Right.
So that um and this year. We kind of are operating on the the goals that we set at the last. Uh town manager evaluation. And so we'll see how that, you know, played out by the time we get to September because. And probably we should make sure that our two new members have got copies of that. Contract so that they can understand what we're talking about in terms of the timing. But and also the evaluation form. Right. And you you know, one of the things that we've got to do is make sure that the evaluation form. Needs the criteria set out in the contract, but also needs the needs of the board. In terms of, is it a useful document or not a useful document, what what worked, what didn't work, that kind of thing. But for for what I'm suggesting at the moment, I think we need to just take a a broad view. And all have time to think about where where we're gonna go this year, what things can we accomplish? What things are long range? And then separately, with the town manager, work out what it is we're thinking about for the next year's goals.
I have a suggestion, because we're gonna have a very um. Short turnaround to if we throw a memo to get it in the packet. We could try, we could try, but we may fail because it's so tight. But maybe we could do chart, you know, have a blue chart. And but also I think it will be, I think, essential to, you know, look at the contract again, look at the evaluation form again. And to keep in mind which things are, you know, we have oversight of our employee. And we're really more responsible for policy and authorization, you know, authorization of funds. But we want, don't want to get too much in the weeds of what our town manager has to do. And when it's policy, I can tell you it really takes a long time, so we should, you know, be very careful about. What is the most important thing and, you know, take a reasonable. Amount of time to get that done. Marcia?
So um maybe we wanna schedule this for the the meeting after the next evening.
But which part?
All of it, so that people can maybe. Have time to put together their lists, I mean, I kind of know because I've been thinking about this for a long time. But, you know, other people might want more time and um. Oh my god, I'm getting tired. Um, oh, I think in addition to having our new members have. The copies of those documents, they should also have the um roles, statutes. You know, that define what the town manager and the select board do, and so. I can, they actually, they should be in the in the handbook. So I can just. I can cite you to the page, but I'm sure you can find it.
Okay. Right. I I would suggest that we have a bit of a brainstorming um. Session, so that we get an idea of the goals and we try to shrink them, you know, get the really important things mapped out. But not overdo it, and 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 maybe, as you say, we might find that we need to have. You know, a couple of weeks to reflect and maybe reflect and write memos based on our brainstorming. So then we do have two stages to it. But I think that will be quite worthwhile, often with meetings too, there's the regular things we have to do, like approve the AP warrant. You know, I'm sure there'll be two or three things.
Yeah, we we have a couple in the pipeline, I know that are gonna be agenda items, but I assume we'll talk with you, Mary, tomorrow. We'll do our usual, it might, we might have just time for your work schedule.
Yes.
Yes, also if we were to try to, you know, write out goals and fifty thousand, you know, but. To get it into next week's packet, we'd have to have it in to.
But I think next week we could, we could brainstorm.
Yes.
And bring our experience, you know, those of us that have been on for a while and also get some new input from our new members. And so. Yes.
And invite the town manager to contribute to that.
Of course, yeah, of course. All right, what else do we need to do? Let's see, Kimo?
I had two questions.
Sure.
Uh, what is the procedure for getting things on the agenda?
Um, well, uh, you can propose an agenda item if a a quorum of us agree.
As proposed during one of these meetings, or can it be sent to the chair or the town manager?
We could decide now, we're talking about an agenda. But if it sort of comes up in between, it needs to be kind of circulated to the um, you know, other members. Let's see, okay, so how do we do that? Brennan, Brennan, do you want us?
Well, I I my recollection of how that's happened is either the the meeting prior to when you'd like the agenda item. You could bring this up at the end when we discuss the topics and get a quorum approval. Uh, and then it becomes an agenda item, we know about it. We've had times when it was like something that came up between meetings. That is one of the things you can circulate amongst the board and not violate the open meeting law, and it's normally through the chair. So you would tell Mary, Mary, I'd like this to be a topic. Mary would circulate that and get a vote, you know, of the board, yes or no, if there's a majority, then yes, you would. You would have an agenda item, occasionally that's happened where we haven't had a consensus or a majority, and so it didn't become an agenda item. But that would be the process.
Conversation and the timing of that, like, you know, if it has to get in the next packet, it's like the timing of that is interesting.
And if um if I had an agenda I had to add. And I'm communicating with you, am I also copying the? The uh town office, the uh the.
Town manager.
Yeah, uh, the select board email.
Uh, that I think that's corresponds if you run a memo. Not not for the agenda, and to Brennan, because he's gonna help coordinate this too. Marcia?
So if I can offer, what we've often done is um. The chair and the town manager sort of sit down because the town manager has got all the work of the town and he knows what has to be done. So um. The he tells the chair, this is what we have to do, and then the chair may suggest, well, let's try this or that as well. And then a draft agenda usually goes out to the whole board, and now you're in the realm of agenda setting. And so we can discuss it on email, but you you can't discuss the merits.
Right.
You have to be, you know, you have to say, no, I don't think that's right. Right for discussion, we, for whatever reason, but you don't want to get into too much. Um, or yes, I agree that we need to talk about this. I I think the problem comes when you start having that deliberative discussion.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah. Uh, I had a second.
Go ahead.
My second question was um.
You wanna pause it for that?
Um, yeah, it was so obvious, oh, how do we check compliance of the committees? That we are uh overseeing in the moment and uh.
Okay.
And other things, how do we check general compliance of the town? Officers, officers, the things that we're responsible for.
That's a really great question, that might not be a March twelfth question, though, now before. Unless you have an answer, that will, you have Priscilla.
Let's go to Priscilla. If if we were gonna put on the agenda. John Carroll was gonna send us something and we were gonna give him some time, I think.
We were gonna decide whether we would like to have a follow up with John.
Yeah, so it's, it's it's an agenda, it's, I I personally would like that.
Okay. Um. Are there others who would agree to that? Your presentation by John might fit in well with the brainstorming. Okay, so yes, yes, how about you, Marcia?
Um, I was drawing, I see something in writing, so.
Probably no.
Probably no.
Okay, Kimo?
Yes.
Okay, um, yeah. I think we can do that. Um, okay, yes, I love, this is, okay, go ahead, Marcia.
Um, just on the issue of following up with committees, um, that's something that's a topic that was like the next stage of the handbook. And so I've got like the final bits of things that I want to put in the handbook and then bring it back to the group. Because there's a lot of stuff in there that we have to think about in terms of approval. And one of those issues is that, how we how we follow up with committees. What we've done so far is um with the exception of one committee of affordable housing. We have talked to every committee and we found out what they're doing, and we've made adjustments to their information in the handbook. And then what we have to decide as a group is going forward, how do we want to keep that discussion? So that we don't end up with a bunch of independent actors doing stuff. But there's um cohesion with the town, you know, sort of goals that we're looking at. And money and all the rest of it. So it's all to be decided, but I think we should probably get that handbook in front of us first. Have to think about it and then start going through the questions, and there's a number including that one that you've asked.
Not on that topic, but I I do it to it.
I I'd just like to comment on our committees and commissions that. There's a lot of enthusiasm that I really appreciate, and and sometimes. Sometimes it's sort of edges toward a little over enthusiasm, like because there might be a great website like Trans, for instance. And suddenly everybody goes to Gaal Mountain uh during their October vacation. You know, that that's just sort of the unintended consequences thing, and so I think we're trying to shape that a little bit with a handbook. Um, and the whole, also the whole area of how we communicate. And if you got somebody that likes to run a website, it's sort of gold for communicating, but they kind of crop up. And we want to make sure that they work nicely for the town, that they don't cause, you know, issues like traffic. There's a lot of traffic up there of Gaal Mountain, during foliage, so we don't, you know, it, we we just sort of want to try to make sure that our. Our needs are not going across purposes with people's enthusiasm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um.
Go ahead.
One of the reasons I'm interested in in looking at the compliance is so they can be enthusiastic and nobody has to worry that they're acting in a way that isn't legal.
Exactly. You'll be very compatible with Marcia on that, I think. She's trying to just get a set of rules that um makes sense or just a reference, just a reference. Yeah, and it'll always, I think, be a work in progress, because enthusiasm can come and go also. You know, so maybe a living document, go ahead, Marcia.
That's exactly right, I think it is organic because statutes are changing, our needs are changing, we've had committees come and go. You know, like Mary was on an education committee.
And that one was designed to sunset, it was very productive, but yeah.
Yeah.
So are somewhere.
So our town's gonna be growing, changing, we have to keep that thing active and modified and it serves as a tool so that people don't. Get appointed to something and then saying, now what do I do?
Right.
So, will will this be an agenda item or are we suggesting not?
Um, well, I think it will eventually, I don't think it'll be right away, but we'll talk to. Think that's Marcia's idea, is that, is that sound okay with Priscilla and Matt to just wait a little bit? See if she can live far along in the handbook, or would you like to have a more fifty thousand? You know, for a discussion of people answering.
I'm fine. Yeah, until she's ready to kind of open it up.
Right, and we can have um, Kimo launch her now to picture. I can accommodate where you want, because I'm more close. Okay, well, maybe it would be, you know, people or something like that. It's probably fairly close, isn't it? Yeah, okay, so maybe that's a people one. And we have a little parking lot, unfortunately, it sort of has a lot of parked cars in it. Things that we will have to agree with, and and some of that may come into our goal setting, so it's good to look at that. If they see some things that have been in the parking lot that might need to be prioritized more or just sort of dropped or, you know. Okay, so does anyone else have any specific agenda item they want to add? I think it's probably fine, probably enough. So, um, that would close out a little word in the session of business.
Mary, may I have?
Oh, sorry, yes.
That's okay. So I just had two thoughts that maybe would just be helpful to Kimo and Matt, having not been through it. Because we're gonna have a very quick turnaround this week. So normally, and and Mary and Miranda and I can work out the logistics of how the agendas get set. But they're normally put together with the chair, the town manager's office, and then normally Friday morning. That would get sent out to the entire board, the board would review that and approve the agenda that we're going to the packet for the next meeting. There have been times when things have come off the agenda, because there wasn't a consensus that that should be on there. And so I guess just as kind of FYI to you, that's that's probably the process you'll see this week and going forward.
That's okay.
Uh, and then the only other thing I had was I did uh, I did bring two hard copies of the personnel policy. Because this is, this is new from what we've done last year, because this was just adopted in October. So I was gonna just hand these out to both Matt and to Kimo and let you.
I've, I mean, I've already signed.
Have you signed the addendum B though?
I think so.
I said whatever people had to sign like a year ago. When this was.
This this is different. So now you're an elected official.
Yeah.
So there is an addendum A and then addendum B. And addendum A might have been what you signed, which would have been the kind of employee. Addendum B is what basically elected officials are asked to sign that just consents that they are gonna be held. To the same level of uh sta- standard of behavior as the other members of the the town staff. So I would like you guys to read it and make sure you fully understand it, but if you're satisfied and that's good. Please sign addendum B and return it to our office. If you have any questions about it, you can certainly talk to me about that. But that was um, that was the only other thing I thought of under organization.
Okay. Okay, so we're ready to move on? So um, call us town meeting results, discussion possible motion, uh. I didn't put this on here, but um.
I think this was. I think this was on here last year, and unless we have anything specific we wanna talk about, obviously, um, the budget did pass. So that was, I think, uh, positive in my opinion, and um. That's all I really have, obviously, no contested races, um, it's pretty, pretty benign election, I think.
I have, I have thoughts, but I think they would come uh more in a brainstorming session. Like I feel informed by the fact that the vote for the budget was, you know, was not overwhelmingly for it. You know, so that, that to me, that's a red flag.
Yeah.
The um. I think it's article eleven about allowing people outside of the orange is the color was just absolutely loud and clear, no. And that's, that's really good, because then you sort of know your boundaries on that. Um, and then our, the Ashmore and the Tracy Hall and DPW were all pretty good margins, so that's really good. Because this is like our feedback from voters, so just think, you know, keep that in mind during our brainstorming.
No fireworks.
Well, fireworks, I was surprised about, but um.
Oh, did they vote against fireworks? Yes, Marcia, I suggested that.
Yeah, to somebody.
I was love drums.
Yeah.
I I think it was pretty cool, and I'm really pleased that, um, you know, I think it's like a learning experience for the for the town. And so people got to learn, oh, if we don't have people who are standing for positions and we get sick of it. We could change our minds and and let some other people come. One of the things that I didn't talk about because I had no dog in this fight, but it was basically that, you know, that is the floor. And so the whole select board could make decisions about how they wanted to run that kind of thing for anybody who was appointed. And for elected officials, it's completely up to the people if they vote for somebody who looks here. But um, I I just wanted to mention that on my way out. Um, and Mary was there too, but on my way out, I I asked Neil about the healthcare stuff.
Neil Fulton? Neil Dell, yeah, Neil Dell.
And because of that comment about how come our health insurance is so expensive. And of course, which I suspected, they've got some sort of statewide pool. Right, so unless we can find some sort of municipal organization. You know.
BLCT doesn't.
They're doing insurance pool. Sort of municipal insurance, like sort of risk.
Right.
Management, but not health, yeah.
The other piece, which I I didn't mention, because I didn't think it was really wanting to go into the lead. That is also a collectively bargained uh benefit for our unions, is to have the Nebraska Shield. So it would not be as simple as just saying, we're gonna change providers. Pretty uh complex.
Something to think about. So any other comments on the election? Results, even though it was last year, it's still worth thinking about, I think. Um, it was just our, our town meeting results, anything else to talk about? I think maybe we were done on that. Yeah. Well, you want to next?
Can I make any, a a move to a chair? I don't think we need to move anything on the town meeting result.
No, it was just a whole discussion.
Can I move to a chair?
Yep, um, is there a second?
I should let a new member do that.
Oh, you're turning. So who did second pass in that?
I just.
You just said, okay. Right? And uh, so have you, oh, yes, okay. Matt?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.